This is more than my dad.
Hey, bud.
Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:02 and the emergency special call section of the Carter County Board of Commissioners is called for order on October the 7th. Tonight, I'd like to start off by saying that I have never been more proud to be from Carter County, Tennessee than I am today. Thank you to our leaders at the county level and EMA office. Thank you to, if I start naming them, I forget somebody. To all of you, department heads and leaders of Carter County government, I applaud you. I lift you up. To our citizens, I just want to say that the outpouring of blood of you have shown has been amazing and I knew you were ready before this flood. But I just stand amazed at the donations that are rolling into each of our centers. And we've got so many. We've got five official and we've got, I don't know how many other officials. But they're mostly located everywhere I go. And thank you to our own people and then outside our local area, people are giving across the country, people are giving. And we all, as Carter Countyans, want to thank you. If you have spent any time volunteering, praying, donating, driving, whatever you've done. Now, we're about to get to the shuffling stage. I thank you. We all thank you. This is coming from not me, but from all of us. Thank you. At this time, I will call forward Chairman Winters from our EMA office and he's going to give us a brief and vigorous plan.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just real quick, in the event that we have to back away this room and at the end of emergency, we ask you to exit to my left, go right, to the front of the courthouse steps, continue to the left to the back side of the courthouse. We have a whole capability at the back side of the courthouse.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. As luck would have it, we will be without our voting devices this evening. So the clerk's office will now call the roll and any motions made or voting taken tonight will be done in this manner. Lee Campbell.
Here.
Nick Holder.
Here.
Rebecca.
Present.
Nancy Brown. Avery Nguyen.
Here.
Julie Nguyen.
Here.
Bradley Johnson.
Here.
Steve Burra.
Here.
Angie Odom.
Here.
Danny Deal.
Here.
Jerry Kemp.
Here.
Jerry Prophet.
Here.
Lisa Childers.
Here.
Ginger Hogen.
Here.
Charlene Thomas.
Here.
Johnny Cable. Jason Clausen.
Here.
Leslie Hughes.
Here.
Aaron Frazier.
Present.
Jerry Spout.
Here.
Candy Collins.
Here.
Thomas Prophet.
Here.
Thank you. So we did have a forum present. There are agendas up here in front of Ms. Nguyen from the clerk's office. If anyone needs a copy of the agenda, we'd like you to have one until we run out. Ms. Nancy, do you want to see anybody out there in the audience for the lock on present? The floor is open for a motion to approve this agenda. Thank you.
I'm looking for a second.
Okay, I had a motion from Commissioner Johnson and I have a second from a few places. Somebody raise their hand for the second. Okay, Avery Nguyen for the second on the motion to approve the agenda. So we are now in discussion phase. If anyone has any changes to make to this agenda, please sit down. Okay, there will be, I think it's being improper if we just voice vote right now on this. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Okay, so the agenda has been approved for this evening. As always, I would like to call on someone to do the prayer, but before I leave that, Sheriff Frigley, would you want to lead our pledge of allegiance this evening? All right, so we'll start off with prayer by Commissioner Willie Campbell calling by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Sheriff Frigley.
I'm going to pray just for a moment, the second moment of silence before I pray. Gracious heaven, Father God, Lord, who is by our heads this evening, Lord, with heavy hearts, Lord, knowing what's going on in our counties and our surrounding counties, God, we know there's people out there, Lord, that's missing tonight. Lord, we know that you know where they're at. Lord, we do pray tonight, Lord, for each one, Lord, in this commission board, this commission board, whatever responder from all around the counties, God, we pray, Lord, that your blessings be upon them. God, we've seen such poor, our Lord of love in this county. Lord, we know that you said, be friendly, we've got to show ourselves friendly. Lord, we've noticed that all over our county today. Lord, we do pray, Lord, for each one, Lord, that lost loved ones during this flood. God, that you cannot overcome their hearts, Lord, if they'll call upon you. Lord, we give you the praise and honor and thank you for your love and mercy and grace, God, that you have upon each one of us, Lord. Lord, we praise, we go through this trial that we're going through, Lord, keep your hands upon us, Lord, give us an extra portion of thy grace, God. Lord, we ask these things in thy name. Amen. Center salute, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the love which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, more than ever, it is so special to ask our elected and appointed officials, guests, community volunteers, please stand and let us show our appreciation for all that you've done. We need to go into an update discussion next and I'm not positive who's going to lead that. I'm assuming Director Harold will be involved and the mayor and whoever else. You all just come on if you know that you're called and called this evening, an update of what's going on.
Really want to come up and deal with.
It seems we don't know some of you. Will you please introduce yourselves?
I'm Caleb Lawson. I'm a district coordinator for the state of Tennessee for our emergency management agency out of our Knoxville office and I am your TMA representative that's been dispatched here to Carter County since roughly 10:30 on Friday after, excuse me, Friday morning.
I'm Lorraine Slager. I'm operating as the PIO, the Public Information Officer for the All Hazards Incident Management Team that was deployed up here. I am Emergency Management Director in Hardin County in West Tennessee.
Okay, so real quickly, I got a call Wednesday night, some of you may have heard this, but I'm going to just be real brief. Wednesday night, that Roan Mountain was start, the water was starting to rise in Roan Mountain. Myself and Shannon both were deployed up there at 11 o'clock Wednesday night. At that time, there was one resident that was rescued out of her house near the Hampton Creek area that night. That's all we had on Wednesday, 5:30 in the morning. On Thursday morning, we were dispatched back to Roan Mountain because it was already flooding at 5:30 in the morning. When we got there, we was already assisting Roan Mountain Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department and Hampton Volunteer Fire Department. We were already rescuing people in the area of the village Hampton Creek area, getting people out of those houses because the water was rising so quick. So we dealt with the flooding all day that day. We, thanks to Matt Birchfield, Dr. Carpenter, helping set up that day for Clowdon High School, letting some of our residents come in there with a place to stay because on Thursday, some of them had already lost their homes. So it was, it was just so terrible that morning. And for what we had to deal with, I want you to know every responder was out in Hampton area, Roan Mountain area, working as far as they could. We had every fire department, every sheriff's department, our constables, all of our responders were working as fast as they could and they technically answered all the calls that was coming in for rescue operations. So we assisted with the rescue operations all day. That evening, I got with Shannon, we both decided we're going to have to open up our EOC the first time our new EOC had been opened up, so we activated our EOC. I went ahead and called our TMA representative. At this time, she had already been dispatched to Unicoi County because Unicoi County was even worse than we were. So we then were sent Caleb, which I've worked with Caleb for several years, and Caleb is out of Knoxville and he was deployed to our area and he assisted me in everything that we requested through TMA. Caleb was so great to work with because we had that connection. I immediately told Caleb that we'd already talked about, I need an incident management team for what we're going to have to do. Me and Shannon just couldn't handle it, it was just so bad. And everybody we talked to said the 98 floods, no comparison to what we're going through right now. So for, we, I was in contact constant with the mayor, so we were just overwhelmed. I appreciate Sheriff Frigley for what he done. We worked together and even himself, he was just, we're just all overwhelmed by what we was going to have to deal with. So we started planning and on Friday morning, our incident management team working with TMA came in and it was the only way we could handle what we have done for Carter County was bringing in that team. And most of this team is from west of Knoxville, Nashville area, Galington, Noonsville, all the area down in there. So I didn't even know any of this team that came, but we're all just like family the way we had to work together. And if it wasn't for this team bringing in planning professionals, finance professionals that's worked with our finance department, Carolyn, it's been amazing how the finance team has helped us in planning for this disaster. So Caleb told me, whatever we need, just go ahead and start ordering. So myself and Shannon, we just started ordering everything we could for this disaster, try to get ahead of the other counties. And we have been successful on ordering a lot of satellite equipment and we got that request put in before other counties could do that. So we are so blessed to be able to get what equipment we put in early. I want you to know, we worked very hard to get this equipment. They put in an extra special request for us. The mayor put in a request for the helicopters, and she'll talk about that, but we're the only county that was able to get five helicopters at one time delivering supplies. So with what we was having to deal with in Elk Mills, we couldn't even get to those people, we didn't even know nothing about, no communications. Our cell phone towers are down, we lost eight towers of Verizon Towers, TMA, where everything's down, trees, the roads was blocked everywhere in Roan Mountain, Elk Mills, we couldn't get nowhere for the trees and the power lines. And Shannon and our highway department has just been, they've worked daylight till dark and at past dark, they've worked almost continuously to try to get some of these roads fixed. So he has been very good, we've been working good with him. He's given us updates. We had a total of about 14 bridges that got destroyed for Carter County. Some of y'all may have seen the Long Hollow Bridge, just for instance, the Elk Mills Bridge, a lot of those bridges up there, Broad Street Bridge, it's going to be closed for who knows how many years. It's warped, Broad Street Bridge is warped, that's the reason we've still got it closed. So just the power of the water was just unreal. Real quickly, before I turn it over. Yeah, I talked to the National Weather Service. This event was equal to the Katrina event. That's how devastating this was. And from Florida up to this area, Georgia, Alabama, as of 8 o'clock last night, we are at $34 billion in damages, 34 billion. That's the damages this storm has caused. Real quick, before I turn it over to the mayor and Caleb, I wanted to speak about Governor Lee. Governor Lee come in and met with me and Patty yesterday and he was just, he had already heard how good that Carter County was doing compared to the other parts of the state. He said, we're way above other counties that surround us. And I told him it was because of the team I had, the incident management team, Patty working with us and Caleb with TMA has just been unreal on what they've got, been able to get for this county. It's just amazing. So Governor Lee called me to the side, we spoke in private for about 10 minutes and he was just, he told me just to handle it one day at a time, that whenever the director of TMA knew that they was coming to Carter County, he told me that Patrick, Patrick Sheehan, the director of TMA, told him that things, before they even got here, he knew things would be running right, the way they're supposed to be with the incident command system. He knew that things were running right and the governor bragged on us how we're running our emergency operations center. And again, we talked for 10 minutes and then, of course, he asked me how things were going and I told him he wanted to know how our EOC was working, our emergency operations center. I told him we had 30 people in there and we had about 17 people standing around the wall every morning and we just didn't have enough seats. And who would have ever thought our brand new emergency operations center was still way too small for this disaster? I just can't imagine, but when you've got 17 other people standing around the wall, it's just crazy. But I invite you all, if you haven't been and come to see our, what's going on in our emergency operations center, I invite every commissioner to come and see how professional this team is that I have and how professional our organization is running over here for Carter County. I beg you to please come. We have briefings throughout the day and every morning at 9 o'clock, we have our first briefing. So anybody, every, any commissioner is welcome to attend at 9 o'clock every morning. I beg you to come and see how things are run in a professional organization. Governor Lee said, can I come and see your emergency operations center? I said, yeah, I'd love for you to come and see our emergency operations center. And he told his group, he said, we're going to their emergency operations center and I want to see, I want to see how crowded they are and I want to talk to that team. And so they followed us up from the Lucenton High School, they followed us up to our emergency operations center. Governor Lee come in, the team was working, they worked continuously for 12 hours a day trying to get us things. We have the, I just can't go on about our team. But Governor Lee come in and he told the team, he said, I'm hearing good things about how things were going in Carter County compared to other counties. And he said, I want you to know, I'm proud of y'all. He said, I'm proud of Carter County for what they're doing. So that's all I want to say and I'm going to turn it over to the mayor.
I'll try to maintain my composure. First of all, I just want to say thank you to this commission, those who have been out volunteering and helping us. It means the world to us, we really appreciate it. All these volunteers right here in our audience, the people that are here, it's been unbelievable. I will not be the same and none of us will be the same after this. We've seen things that no one should ever have to see. But we're going to, we're going to survive this and I'm going to lead us through it and we're going to come out ahead. So the governor was here yesterday after what he's seen here. I just got this before it came in this meeting. Carter County has been declared a complete disaster. That request was yesterday, President Biden's already signed it. So we're. And I've supported his team and I asked him yesterday, I needed some of it back for my county and my citizens. And right here it is. So that is, that's gold, you all know that's gold. And so we're going to be taken care of. And that sign of the president, all the, everything's been removed, we don't have to do any of those extra things, it's done. From him coming here yesterday, meeting with Billy and beating the EOC. So thank you for that, thank you for that. A couple things, a lot of people have been asking about FEMA, when FEMA's going to be here. FEMA will be here Friday, boots on the ground, looking for a location for their command center. Once they find that location here, they will be back in seven to 14 days to set that command station up and we'll be able to have our citizens start going to that command station, talk about their losses and those such things. Real quick, public information releases, we are teaming up with Avon Sanders with the city and with, okay, she's, and so they're putting all this stuff out for us, that we're doing press releases, Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. I'll be doing live Facebook streaming to keep the county updated and all the citizens. What else have we got going on?
Lots of, lots of info going out on social media. Anything that you see us push out on social media for safety or anything like that is also pushed out to all of the local media, any TV stations, radio stations, anything like that, because we know obviously not everybody's got internet back, not everybody's got power back, it's going to be a bit, but we try to get all that information out any which way we can.
And we're using the EMA, we're using the EMA Facebook page and the City of Elizabethan Facebook page. They're using those two pages so we can keep the messaging consistent and keep it the same throughout the county. And we just asked if commissioners could help us share that by sharing that around. I'm trying to share it on my personal page, just sharing that around so people can get the information out. We're doing the radio interviews. NBC was here this afternoon, so we will be on NBC tonight. I was down at the rec center, we went through the rec center. Right, not my county government and my team here, because I couldn't, couldn't do this without you. So it's kudos to you because you'll be on the news tonight, how proud I am of you. We met with, early before you came in, I had a team meeting with office holders and directors, which went very well, dating them, bringing them on board because we are open county offices back up tomorrow for regular operations. So all the office holders, directors are up to speed, they know where we're at and what we need. And obviously, I am able to reassign employees in the county government to other positions if needed, as we begin losing some of our team that's here to help us. We may have to pull county employees out of other positions to help us out at donation centers, wherever that may be, and I do have that authority to do that, but that still keeps them as county employees and that protects them, they just may have a different job assignment. A lot, but we're really, and I'm going to start trying to keep an internal situational type awareness email going. Ginger will be my go-to person on that and she will get that information out to you. She will be copied on that email and she will be the liaison for me, for you all to the commission. She's probably going to be mayor-ing with me, so I hope you all welcome her aboard for me. She's a, she's my partner and my teammate and I'm going to be relying on her a lot, so she's just going to be a voice for me and I extend that to her and I tell her I appreciate it, everything she's doing. So other than that, if you all got any questions for me, I'll take those. If not, I'm going to open it up to Caleb from TMA and let him disperse a little bit of information with you and maybe some questions if you have those. So if you've got any questions for me, I may not be in this emotional situation, but I'll sure answer them.
First off, I'd like to thank the commission for inviting us tonight to speak and thank you for those in the audience in attendance. Like I said, my name is Caleb Lawson, I'm with the state of Tennessee under our emergency management agency out of our office in Knoxville. And the first thing I want to talk about with everyone is this event is something that the state of Tennessee has not experienced in its recorded history. This is a disaster the likes of which will unfortunately be written in the history books for years to come. But I can tell you, not having ever covered Carter County in the past, being requested by Billy and responding to your emergency operations center, working those first couple nights, I've done disasters for the state of Tennessee in 11 years and there's two ways to immediately respond. Either as a community and as a first responder organization, you can either come together or you can come. And I can tell you that everyone in Carter County came together and worked together, city, county, through the middle of the night that first evening, came back the next day, folks that were working hours and hours and hours tirelessly, tirelessly, bringing in some of the best and brightest resources from west Tennessee, middle Tennessee, swift water rescue teams, drone teams, you know, all kinds of resources descended upon Carter County. Like Billy mentioned about, we had five or six National Guard helicopters here over the weekend, pulling stranded residents from their homes and also delivering crucial needed supplies, activities that still continue to this day. And from the state's perspective, we are here to support you as a local government. Anything that Billy, the mayor, the incident management team needs, the state of Tennessee will do everything that they can to get you those resources, whether it be partnering with FEMA. We had, like the mayor said, FEMA was in town yesterday doing that initial first step. I'll be the first to admit, this will be a long process going forward. The state, the incident management team and your local county and city officials will be here for the entire, entire process. So the biggest thing that I want to push forward is everything that came from this disaster, when you go home at night, talk to your family. This was a very, very, very traumatic event. Talk to your kids, talk to your neighbors, because if you take a step back and look at where you were Wednesday of last week, life in this county looked entirely different. So just think about that and I will be available for any questions you may have and.
We'll update you on and the Black Hawks that we've had in Carter County, that's been absolutely amazing. At one point in time, we had seven sitting on the airport up there, ready to fly from Carter County. Caleb, I believe I got them here with what we did, right?
Yes. It might paperwork, but sometimes I'm not taking. We continue to have new, you know, you know, obviously we had our first initial push, what I would call that first 48 to 72 hours. And like I said, we had swift water rescue, rescue teams from Nashville, you know, we had other first responders from east Tennessee and we're continuing to add to that overall catalog. Today, the Knox County Sheriff's Office flew their Vietnam era Huey helicopter up here and delivered 32 bales of straw to farmers in the county that had animals and livestock that were in dire need of feed. That's an activity that will continue again tomorrow. So as we transition from the immediate response phase of this disaster to the short term and long term recovery, there will be many hurdles, but from what I've seen in this community over the last five and a half days, I think you have both the leadership and the drive to push through that.
On the Black Hawks, we have been, I'm going to probably open this up to Jason, what he's facing Clausen, thank you for all you've done up there, but we have been doing drops in the Black Hawks in there. I've been on the drops with them because I grew up in that area and I needed to be there and I needed to see my citizens. And so I rode on those helicopters in the night, dragging water and generators off so I could talk to them and tell them we're going to take care of them instead of the military jump off on their properties because they're scared and they're worried. And they're hugging me and they're crying and it had to be me that sees them. So those, those helicopters have been a lifesaver for what we've been through. I flew up there in the night and the pitch dark to get people needs. We've evacuated people with their animals on those helicopters to get them back out of there. So we've kept those at a good rotation up there and they're still here and as long as we're utilizing, they're going to stay here. We're housing three teams here in Carter County, they're staying here. The battalion commander called me and said, as long as we have somewhere for them to stay, he's more than welcome to let them stay in Carter County as long as we need them. We have created some wonderful friendships and I just want to tell you, we've been working hard and I know the community right now is going from shock and now we're in the anger stage and guess who they're going to be lashing out at? Us, the elected officials, because that's what happens, that's the next emotion. We have just got to console them and let them know we're doing everything possible and I know this commission's going to do that. I'm super proud of all 24 of you and our elected officials and our directors. I can't say it enough, but reading this book long honestly, we're grateful for it. Jason, I might let you.
I mean, I just can't thank everybody enough that's got the Blackhawks, got the supplies, that was down here loading them, getting them to us. I mean, we've had people up there that are cut off from the world. Bridge is gone, our fire department destroyed, we almost lost members dragging the trucks out, we lost a truck. I mean, it's just been devastating to us, but then we've got people coming to us with
I mean, it's just been devastating to us, but then we've got people coming to us with, can't get oxygen, can't breathe, need a generator. We had generators come in the middle of the night. Starlink Internet set up today. I'm late for the meeting because there was people running to my house because they, like a mile and a half, two months from my house, because they can't call anybody. And said, there's people up here in medical distress. Drove up there, 75-year-old people, I think they've probably been living in their car because their home was damaged and was disoriented. I don't know what was going on, couldn't get a pulse, lady had a stroke two months ago. Make a phone call and we have Black Hawk helicopters sitting in our yard and we get those people out. It took me two hours to get here today. If we hadn't, didn't have those helicopters, where would those people be? And that's going to continue to be a need for a long time up there. People don't have hot meals. People don't have water. We have been gas for generators and we have, anything we've asked for, y'all have got for us. And it's just been life-changing for these people. These people are going to continue to need this, but it's just to see the look on their face when you give them five gallons of gas. There was a little boy this morning when I went up there and I was, there was another couple and his, his mother's on hospice. We took him a generator and they're outside cooking on this little stove. Needed food, gas. No, we're good. Thank you so much. It's like a certain war storm's coming. They're terrified. They don't have any communication. I said, I'm coming every day. We'll know. Drive out, there's another home sitting up there and there's a 16, 17-year-old boy with a campfire cooking a meal. And I stopped and said, you need anything? He said, I don't have anything. He said, we don't have food. Run back, bringing food to them, this little boy cooking on a campfire. This is devastating. We're, we're living in a third world country, war zone. Hoagie is, is not okay. Elk Mills is not okay, but if it wasn't for y'all, I don't know where we'd be. The mayor has, if I need something, she's answering my call. Nick, has been there for us and please keep being there for us and thank you all so much. But man, don't stop. Don't stop and mostly keep us in your prayers. I mean, God has, has just provided for us and there is an abundance of stuff coming in. But it's not easy to get there. Those helicopters have been just a game changer. I mean, it's just, it's going to get worse before it gets better. Thank you all.
Anybody have any questions for us? I mean, there's, we could stand up here all night and do this and it'd be exhausting for all of us, but.
Because we knew two days in advance there might be 20 inches of rain.
That's, that's a question, when I was on the conference call with them right before this happened Friday, they told me they were going to release and I told them they can't because the rivers and streams are saturated. Can you repeat the question? Kind of do elevation?
Excuse me, mayor. Avery, when you talk, will you try to speak louder or turn around and face something? Thank you, mayor. I'm sorry to interrupt.
I ask why the TBA waited so late to open the dams when we knew two days in advance there might be 20 inches or more rain. Having lived in Florida my entire life until I moved up here in the sixth, I've been through some major storms down there. We've always got a lot of rain. I just was questioning why they waited so late when we knew in advance.
You had TBA that's not in Carter County. They're talking to me from Chattanooga and trying to tell me about my river streams. That is when I made an executive decision to evacuate Sycamore Shoals Hospital. That wasn't even my call, but I did call the CEO and ask him to evacuate. I wanted, we not want to be in the shape that Unicoi was in because TBA was going to release. And they could tell me all day long from Chattanooga about what they think and what it is, but they are not in Carter County. They tried to tell me that it wasn't going to get high enough to mess with the hospital. That doesn't matter to me. I'm not risking that. We evacuated anyways. So that's a, that's just a, a failure on TBA because they just don't understand our rivers and streams like we do. And if it was me down there, they would have known. It was my conference calls with them. I had to make the decision to evacuate. I just couldn't trust them. So we did. So there's not a real good answer to that, other than the fact I had to make an executive decision.
Before it started on Friday morning, the water was at the top of the bank. I've got video of it on that day, so I could show them that it was there. So there's a four-year-old woman at the head of the river up there at Cove Creek in Burbank. And I was just curious why they waited so long. And I, I didn't know, but you didn't think you would be able to answer, but I was going to put that question out.
Just real quick, I know finances, Carolyn will talk about this later, but we'll max the credit cards out. So Rusty met with me today. Rusty Crowe was here and also spoke with the governor yesterday when he was here. Carter County can't float this type of money. We don't have the cash flow for it. It, it will disintegrate our, our county. So governor and our legislature, they're going to have to go into emergency session. And they will, they will float the money to Carter County and Carter, and state will get it back from the, from DC. So that that doesn't happen to us. It's going to take a little bit of time to get that worked out. They're going to have to come in and help us float the money. We can never, we can never do this without them giving us the money. So they're going to go, Rusty came by today, Rusty Crowe, they're going to do an emergency session. They're going to discuss about getting funds out to Carter. We're not the only ones. Unicoi and Johnson County, they could never do this either. Rural counties, we don't have the resources to do this, to do cash flow. So they are, and they do understand that, but Carolyn will go over the finances and the things that we're looking at. There's, there's just going to, we're going to have months and do this. But I won't keep on going in. We've all been in the trenches for a while today. So just know I'm a resource for you all. I love you all. We're ready to go, but we're going to get our county back and we're probably going to get a new school too. Dr. Carter.
Hey, mayor, before you sit down, is it okay if we bring Mr. Nate Jones up here?
Yes.
Our newly elected state representative for Carter, Unicoi counties is getting drawn by fire. Both of our counties have, have suffered from this, this hurricane. And Representative Jones, I just wanted to bring you up here and let you, I have anything or update us on your home county. Even though we know we represent both counties very well. Is there anything you want to add?
I just want to say, I'm sure, I would share Patty's comments. I actually was up at the airport a couple of times with her. We did some, tried to do some deliveries and the weather was too bad and we couldn't get to. But I'm so proud of Carter County as if you, I'm not from Carter County, but I feel like I am. I met some, worked with so many of y'all. And just so thrilled to be able to be here with you tonight and just so proud of what y'all are doing. And I pray for you every day and every morning. And it's just, we're in a rough time, but just like Patty said, we're, we're strong. We're resilient people and we will get through this together. So hang in there. I know, I hope I get to go into the special session with them so we can help bring some money back to Carter County. But just know that we're going to be, I'm going to be knocking on those doors and bringing that money back to Carter County because I know that we need it and, and the story about Hoagie and y'all are just cut off from, and we need to make sure that, I know Patty will make sure she continues to get the resources up there to you guys. But anyway, I can help her get that done. She knows that I'm going to be there to help her anyway I can. So, you know, I continue to, yeah, and as for Unicoi County, we're all in this together and we're, we're hanging tight too. And, and we've got a great support team there as well. So just hang in there, guys. We'll get through this. Love you all.
And on a, on a note, I've told her she better get prepared to get her rent. She's on because I'm relentless.
Thank you all. I'm very grateful. Okay, so on your agenda, we're at item number nine. And I'm going to be part of this part of which we please.
Normally I don't use a smartphone, but I will tonight because I was asked to. So on the agenda next for your consideration is the contract in Carter County. And forgive me if I say it wrong, I think it's Shouse, is that right? Shouse LLC. Essentially, these folks are providing basically boots on the ground, assistance in, in every aspect of the degree removal and the recording process and consulting for what it's going to take to basically a liaison with, with FEMA to, to get this ultimate reimbursement of the expenses that are going to be happening. So I reviewed the contract and happy to answer any questions that you all have. I will say that these folks, despite not even having a pre-contract, have been here at least since Monday and, and working pretty much around the clock. So I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all have about the contract.
Yes, sir.
Just to be the rules lawyer, how many of these actually have gone through, of nine, 10 and 11 have gone through a, any of the committees? On the agenda, the consideration, necessary alterations, consideration.
None of that is required.
Matt and Chair, I'll make a motion that for items nine, 10 and 11, we suspend the rules relating to them having to go through a committee before they be addressed by the county commission.
What I'm saying is that it's not necessary. We're in the local state of emergency. This commission has authority. We don't have to go through any. The mayor has authority, the funding authority has authority for things that we don't need a committee for. So those decisions can be made here tonight without spending.
Then I withdraw the motion. Charlie, Mike.
Does any other commissioner have questions about this contract?
I know an email sent out earlier today. I don't have any other kind of opportunity to read it. You may just be laying eyes on this for the first time. At the commission's pleasure, would you like to have at least five minutes to read this contract thoroughly?
Just to throw it out there, I will say the contract will be terminated in thirty days' notice. So if there's something that comes up to be a concern, that can be addressed in thirty days' time.
May I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Just a question. Because of the numbers, the prices and so forth, you know, like on the ARP rates and all that for services ran.
Oh, thank you. Everybody can hear you.
Are we in hopes that this will be picked up or can be used if federal funds? Because I'm concerned about the end of the contract dollar value versus what our unserved fund balance and what is available to us to possibly qualify for ARP, what little we have left. I don't want to get in the rabbit hole. I know they're a good service, but they wouldn't be here.
Yeah, and there, from what we've discussed, this is reimbursable. Do you, so do you want to comment to that? Because you, you're more the expert on that one than I am.
Yes, my name is Sonya Shouse. I work at this company. I have 29 counties, cities, municipalities, power companies, special sewer districts in the state of Tennessee. I've been in Tennessee for 15 years. I started this company, my dad, my mom, my brother and I, right after Katrina. It's funny they mentioned Katrina because when my dad called me from Mississippi and said, how bad is it? I said, it's Katrina bad. So what this is, this contract, we are here to help you understand the process of getting your federal FEMA money back. Now that we have a declaration, we can start with the debris. Somebody has to document it. No way FEMA wants it documented or you will not get your money back. It has to be done perfectly for them. Same with documenting your fire, your police, every person, every piece of equipment that has been on this county has to be accounted for on paper, turned in to FEMA for reimbursement. Same with your roads. That's next. Document every bit of your roads, your infrastructure, far your roads, culverts, your ditches, your bridges, everything has to be documented and submitted to FEMA. We started this company in 2006. We stopped counting disasters probably in about 2012. We have worked so many disasters. I do this every day. You in this county has not been hit with a federal declaration in years. All the FEMA rules change all the time. I do this. I speak their language. I understand them. I know what they're coming here asking for the county. I have the documents. I know what they're going to want to give to FEMA to get that money moved back to you. Going to help with your school system, temporary schools, things of that nature, can help you organize. I've done this for a very, very long time and have been successful at it for a long time. With the question about the dollar figures, we fall under category C with FEMA, which is direct administrative cost. It is 100% reimbursable back to you, up to 5% of your entire project. That's your schools, your roads, your emergency measures, your debris, all of that. That's where we play in that. And FEMA in 2016, 17, created that administrative bracket, that category, so that people can help you. Because as a county, you're functioning. I cannot tell you how proud I am of your county. I have walked into counties that has let debris set on the side of the roads for 60 days. They didn't know what to do. We have the National Guard here now. This debris is moving 72 hours after the event. Y'all are way, way ahead. There's places in Florida that hasn't moved as quick as your county is moving. I'm super proud and I need to know things are moving in the right direction. The fact that you got a declaration today, I've seen it take 100 days to get a declaration. So you guys are doing it right. You're documenting it right. Really, really doing the best that I have seen. I'm very proud. Can I ask you a question?
No problem. Just to address it further. The services that you all perform is, is outstanding. I wouldn't question your eligibility or the skill itself. My concern is for the overall budget and the resources that we have as a county. I'm sure the financial management of the county, we're, you know, Hannah Foot was the finance director and our committee, which is very strong, very knowledgeable, but having experience in the 98 flood here, boots on the ground, and then we found out later that there was a lot of items that was not qualified because of poor documentation, flying by the sea, the bridges, long Rangers out here doing as they please. And they found out that if you look and examine what documents are left in 98, you'll find that they had to go into an unbelievable amount in their unserved fund balance to recover, to pay for, or I'm going to say our unpardonable sins for not asking questions. And knowing the results of what you do and all, I'm retired military, Navy CBs. I've done disaster recovery on all of the coast, the Gulf of Mexico and east and west of Florida. And it's no fun when you're standing by yourself, but have such a professional group as you present to the whole law maker.
We've had, we've had customers lose bridges and knock your river. And they bring us in at the 11th hour to try to help out. You're right. So far, from what I've seen, y'all are on top of them. And we've got coding that's going to be set up. There was not one in the software from what I understand, but y'all did set one up. You can code everything that's spent. It's going to make, make things a lot easier.
Yes, appreciate it.
A question, the, the workers that will, you, you, or the companies that you were talking about, are those local to Tennessee or to this area? Subcontracting?
Yes, we will not be subcontracting. What we have is our professional team, which is a team of probably about eight to 10 people that we work on. What I'm going to help do is walk you through the guidelines for putting out any RFPs, any contracts. I've worked with attorney already on getting some land lease agreements for temporary debris sites and TDAC. There's a lot of entities in that. We will not be subcontracting anything out. We will be advising and helping you and your team pick the contract. We will not only follow your local laws, your state laws, this is federal money. We'll be following the FEMA guidelines and making sure that nothing is missed, not one clause is left out of your contract. So you are able to get that money back.
So, long story short, we're project managers. We're going to write the bids for debris removal, because the guard is not going to be here another week or two. Also, you'll have a monitoring company that will document where it was picked up, how it was picked up, where it was delivered to. It goes to a temporary site, and then it goes to a final site. So we track it. We track it.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Yes, it's open to public.
Open later.
On our agenda this evening, public comments happen at a later time.
The status, we are waiting a motion for the acceptance of that. Madam Chair, I make the motion that we accept this contract as reviewed and approved by our county attorney and really through, and is way worth our investment to have this firm to advise and oversee for this county.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay. I saw a second from Nancy Brown, Mr. Fraser, but thank you very much. So we do have a motion on the floor to approve the contract and for the commissioners to come, and a second from Nancy Brown. Question, Paul Johnson, second, Barbara. Is the session time? Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Nick Campbell?
Yes.
Nick Culver?
Yes.
Robert A. Tubbs?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Nancy Brown?
Yes.
Avery Nguyen?
Yes.
Julie Guan?
Yes.
Rabbit?
Yes.
Steve Burra?
Yes.
Angie Odom?
Yes.
Danny Deal?
Yes.
Gary Kemp?
Yes.
Jerry Prophet?
Yes.
Lisa Childers?
Yes.
Andrew Holger?
Yes.
Charlene Thomas?
Yes.
Emily Cable? Kristen Clausen?
Yes.
Todd Smith?
Yes.
Kristen Rasnick?
Yes.
Henry Hughes?
Yes.
Aaron Fraser?
Aye.
Jerry Stout?
Yes.
Julie Collins?
Yes.
Thomas Prophet?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. You can work.
Thank you.
We've heard this before. Emergency declaration, we can turn it around. We'd like to go with these seven days. We will request the county to put together a FEMA debris quarantine that's required by FEMA, and usually that's people within the affected area or within the administrative area. So we're going to get this thing cranked up really, really quick. As a matter of fact, I've already started working on it, because we just felt good about you guys.
Well, that's fair.
Thank y'all very, very much.
May I please tell our people who will be watching this live stream, the RFPs will go out in what manner and into what public?
It has to be advertised regionally. We very experienced at pushing it out. In other words, FEMA wants to see multiple states have an opportunity to look at it. That's a requirement on their behalf. So we'll be pushing that out.
I also want to see, there's certain qualifications for FEMA procurement as far as that it's advertised to minorities in different situations to be able to bid on this, and we'll advise you where to place it regionally, state, locally, and federally, so you'll know where to put the bid out for. It will be as easy as looking on your Facebook page for you. Somebody will have a link to get to it.
I just wanted to make sure that our local people that want to bid will.
Oh, absolutely.
Will know about that and have access to it.
Yeah, once we get a grip on the amount of debris, we'll consult with all about the bonding requirements, because FEMA don't want them to be too high, but at the same time, if we see how much we think it's going to be, which we think it's going to be pretty steep, is what we're going to recommend in the RFP.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on to item number ten. I'm not sure who is addressing this item. Financial manager, financial management. If anyone speaks to number ten.
Well, I'll just say, I mean, if it was put on the agenda in case there was a discussion needed of alterations, I think, as the mayor said earlier, the office holders have met, they've decided how to move forward, the courthouse is going to be open, decisions have been made, so I don't necessarily know that there's anything else to address on number ten. Somebody has something.
Item number eleven.
That one is me. I'm sorry, can you hear me? First of all, thank you very much for the consideration and approval for our consulting team. I've been working with them since they got here and since I got back on Saturday, and they have been fabulous. They've given us a lot of recommendations. I also appreciate the team that has been here that have given us fabulous direction, and it was their recommendation as well that we hire a consultant because of all the complicated forms and all the different things that have to be addressed and documented during this process. So I do appreciate that. I do want to bring to your attention that according to our policy, emergency purchases, that's in our policies and procedures, most of that, at this point, has fallen to me. I've had to approve anything that has been spent up to this point. Up to this point, we've not had real large things, but we are going to get to that point very, very quickly. I got my first two-hundred-plus request today, and so I need to know what you, as a commission, how you want to go forward with this. The mayor and I are in constant communication as far as things that are purchased. I'm running Patifans past her. She's signed off on several things with me, but there's not always going to be an opportunity to have a special call meeting. And so, as I said, our policy right now gives me the authority to do that. I've talked to our audit team, they agree with that, but I'm asking the commission, is that your pleasure to move forward with? Would you prefer to have a committee that reviews it on a weekly basis? Do you want me to just bring these things to your attention on a monthly basis? Since a lot of you may not be aware that that's what the policy is, I want to, in full disclosure, make sure you're aware that's what we have in place now and see if that's how you want to continue to move forward.
Yeah, a question. So the way we handle it now through financial management and budget, would it be beneficial to us to have a financial management and budget meeting weekly to review those items and to approve them? Would that be possible?
You asking me?
Anybody.
Well, obviously, the whole point of the emergency is to avoid red tape and delaying. So, you know, certainly, she's correct, she has the authority, but while we're under this local state of emergency, the mayor has declared it, can extend it, you know, essentially, any procurement statute or policy can be suspended. So that's where we're at. You know, if it's a true emergency, it's a true emergency. So I don't know that you'd want to delay it. Obviously, this group can meet on a special call meeting in forty-eight hours' notice, but you can't have a meeting every time something needs to be purchased.
Understood, but I'm saying, in general, to keep up with what the spend is.
We've got a spreadsheet that we've created that we've kept, and everything we've done up to this point has needed to be done immediately, or not even within twenty-four hours. It needed to be done right then, so everything up to today has been that case. Now that we do have the consulting team, they are also available to kind of help with that as far as help with the determination, can this wait, can this not? I also have to rely on the office holder or the director that's requesting the particular item, because I may not necessarily know. I don't have expertise in all those areas. So that's why I'm basically making you aware. Everything we've had up to this point has been pretty much a no-brainer decision on, yes, we've got to do this and we've got to do it right now. I don't know how long we will stay in this status of things coming up, but they will come up, and there are things that are going to have to have a decision within just a few hours, much less twenty-four hours. So I'm just kind of making the commission as a whole aware of that's where we are right now, and that's what the rules are set in place based on our policies.
That's the question I have. Would it be during this, it'd be beneficial to the county to have a meeting of the financial management and the budget to keep a handle on the finances of this?
That's true.
That's what I'm asking.
I agree with Commissioner Dill on that one. We have the committees in place, we already have, the people already has an idea of what the finances are, the financial committee. I personally agree with his suggestion.
Okay, I think as we get going, more meetings are in place, but everybody is everywhere, still trying to help their areas. We have elected officials in these departments, highway and everything else, and they're putting, they know what they're needing, they're putting it in, they're trying to get things done. We cannot hire people and have them in place and have them work with handcuffs on. I know what that's like, even on the level that I'm helping. My suggestion, if you want to do it every two weeks, have a meeting, but every week, people don't have that, because everybody is busy doing things that are on these committees. We have entrusted, I mean, that's why we have them here, this is money that eventually is going to, we have to start doing something quickly. The longer that we sit and talk about it, there's people that need these things done. So my suggestion, just saying, let's trust the people that we've elected to do the things, and this is a policy that's in place, and if we're not going to let the policy be in place, then why do we have the policy to start with? So let's let the policy, but now if you choose to every other week or something, do something. But we cannot hold these office holders and things under a microscope and not trust what they know that they need for their department. That's just my decision, because I know how quickly everything's happening, and we don't want them to spend their time in meetings when they need to be out here actually getting their things done. That's just my thought.
My point to that is there are things that are not going to be even wait for a whole week. We've seen several of those. We have an example tonight, I told Mike I was going to use him as an example. We have the opportunity to replace five vehicles that were destroyed in the flood. I need those vehicles. So that's a two-hundred-thousand-plus request. That's by far the largest thing that we've gotten at this point. With so many areas being affected by this disaster, if we don't act quickly and take those vehicles that he says he needs, and I trust his judgment on that, then we won't get them, and we probably won't get replacements for a long time. So those types of items are what I'm talking about. Anything under, you know, ten, fifteen thousand dollars, that's fine, but something of that nature is a little bit different. It's a little bit more money, and I want to make sure that I have the confidence of this group to make those split-second decisions, because they are going to come up. I do think there's value added in having additional meetings so that you are aware of where we are, because, yes, I'm watching cash flow very, very carefully, because I know the money that we're spending, we potentially may not be able to get it back for twenty-four months. And so that is very concerning, and I also don't know how this is going to affect our cash flow for the next twenty-four months, and that could be significant. I've already had those discussions with those who have been through this before, so I'm making sure that I'm being very transparent with the group of where we are.
Pastor Collins?
I was going to ask Commissioner Dill, are you saying or asking, I couldn't hear exactly what you were saying, that to me, just to be updated, or to me, to actually phone?
Not to, this is not to handcuff, I'm sorry, I did not mean that to sound like we were handcuffing anybody, any department or anything. There'll be needs, there'll be needs to come in that minute that needs to be done the next minute. I understand that totally. Mine was to monitor the spend, because if you're sitting and telling me, we're going to have to wait twenty-four months, we are going to have to monitor the spend of this county. That was all that was for. And it's not for approval, it's to monitor the finances.
Well, and I appreciate that clarification, because I like the concept of having the information out to the group that can therefore be put through the whole commission so that you are aware of what's going on. It's important, because you have a responsibility for that. It's important that you have the information as to what we've done to the point, and that's why we've been keeping manual spreadsheets up until now, because we didn't have the ability to get into the accounting system, because we had no power. And everything was down, and we actually had a substantial piece of equipment that got fried in this process, too. So it took a couple of days for us to get up and running him. So we've been going old school and basically keeping everything on a manual basis so that we can keep up with where we are to this point.
Okay. Julie Collins has the floor. Are you finished, ma'am?
Well, I just wanted to say, I mean, I know how crazy it is, and I'm sure, you know, it's going to be a little difficult for the sheriff, and I'm sure Dr. Carpenter and some of the people, you know, meet weekly, but, you know, if it's just to get updates, you know, they might not be able to attend the meeting, but they could still be sent the updates, emails or whatever also. I thought that's what Commissioner Dill meant, I just wanted to make.
Just update, just monitor.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make.
That's what we should be doing, just monitor.
That's what I thought, I just.
We need to buy cars, we've got to buy cars, we can't wait. Need new footprints.
Thank you, that's, that's okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Along with what Commissioner Dill had said, as far as keeping a weekly update to the whole group, would it be a lot of trouble to send an email summarizing the weekly spend? Would it be a whole lot of trouble to send that out to all the commissioners?
No, that's fine.
Just to keep everybody in the loop, everybody knows, and then if there's an issue, then we can talk about it on the bi-weekly meeting or something like that.
And that's the point of bringing this up, is transparency. Everyone needs to be aware of where we are and what we've done, so that you have an idea of what we have spent, but also you have an idea of what we're going to be looking at as well as we go forward with this, because this is not going to be a short process.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with Commissioner Dill. Another thing that we haven't thought about, there have been lots of lost property. That's going to impact what our revenue looks like in this coming year.
Two years.
In the next two years. So I agree with his assessment. We don't have to pass everything, but those of us that are developing the budget to bring back to this floor, we need to have that information. So I concur. I think I would much prefer budget and financial management meet on a regular basis, maybe once a week.
Yes, I think it would be a great support to the finance department and to myself to just know that we have that transparency there. So I know I have the authority to do it, but I also feel very strongly that I need to be transparent with that, so that everyone is aware of where we are and what's going on, and that will help with knowing where your needs are as things come up, so that you're well informed.
Commissioner Fraser?
What is the current level of the unassigned fund balance that is unencumbered, and what is the current level that we have to continue to maintain? Where are we sitting at? Is the bucket, how full is the bucket?
So fund balance we are currently at, and I don't want to forget if you have the wrong number.
And I will assume this is not including many of the things. And I will assume this is not including many of the things.
I mean, I started saying it changes on an hourly basis, so we're right now at 19 million. I'm also looking at items from a cash basis because I want to clarify on that, we, yes, we do have cash available. We also have restricted monies that we cannot do anything with, we cannot spend those monies. Now, thankfully, the mayor has been able to speak with the governor and we are hopefully going to be given some additional funds so that that will help us with this because we're going to run out of money pretty quick if we don't get some assistance. I'm also going to ask, and I've checked with the comptroller's office to make sure this is allowable, we have some other funds that we have earmarked for other items. We can basically borrow those funds to use on a cash basis as we have large things that come up that need to be reimbursed. And we will give that money back to that fund as we get money from the state or whenever we get reimbursed from the federal side of it. So, we have a few options there. We're fine now, but I'm not just looking at today or tomorrow, I'm looking at where we're going to be in six months, 12 months, and 24 months. I'm more concerned about our cash flow next year than I am this year because I know what the impact based on what I'm being told is probably going to be and that's where we're going to have some issues.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dawson.
Madam Chair, a couple of things. I would like to place in the motion that we take the chair, the vice chair of budget, the chair, the vice chair of financial management as the weekly monitor with the finance director. And if we as a monitoring see that we need both committees or even call for a special call meeting of the full commission to make the presentation for approval, that would be their duties. Now, the question second is, Counselor, every time we meet, even though we're, that means you're going to have to advertise. We're allowed to blow it on the kingdom of government. I mean, are you going to spend time, you're going to spend more time with the press and you do your actual government job?
Second, Madam Chair, I second the motion.
Okay, so.
I'll remove that motion because you can't work the vote. Second Amendment. Well, if you have to advertise every time, Doc, and you've got to have how many days?
Well, we do that with our budget hearings. We just plan them out on calendar.
You could advertise one advertisement and say we're going to meet once a week on Thursday or whatever you want to do, as long as it's advertised, you could.
I put it back in motion.
Okay, so, I want to be sure that I understand the motion and I think it needs to be clarified. Do we need to save the day and time right now?
I'm sorry.
Do we need to save the day and time in this motion?
Well, you certainly can, yeah. You want to cover one publication that's going to cover all the meetings that might be necessary during this situation. So, if you want to pick a date and time, that's fine, or you can do it later as long as it's advertised officially in advance of the first meeting. So, you know, it wouldn't be, you know, there is no authority necessarily to call a committee meeting on 48 hours' notice, so I think we're back under the five days. So, as long as you advertise the list of meetings at least five days before you have the first one, I think you're fine. But at the end of the day, this committee can't make any decision necessarily, it's just a discussion of things, you know, because obviously that committee can't vote and bind the county on anything, it has to be the full commission. So, that committee would be taking action to recommend a special call, full commission if necessary.
Do you want to vote in your motion at this point or does the motion stand as said?
The motion stands that Martin would be the chair, vice chair of both budget and financial management, will meet once a week, Thursday, Thursday at 4:30 before, Thursday's at 4:30. That way, when we have our financial management on Thursdays, that way we'll interfere with our budget meetings and then when we have our financial management meetings, we'll have it at 5:00. So, this will be prior to the financial on the first Thursday of every month. It'll be every Thursday month, every Thursday of the month. Okay? That's my friendly amendment.
He's asking for a friendly amendment that the meetings are on Thursdays at 4:30 and I think we need to begin then and it needs to be about this, this day, so ready with attorney-honor? So, that when we made the earliest meeting that could be held, this motion passes is next Thursday.
The date to begin is immediate because we're in an emergency basis and that's what the purpose of it is for emergency basis. So, whatever the, as soon as by law, you know, the public meeting regulations and all, that's when we want to begin, but it's, I'm going to say, responsibility to the finance director, should begin immediately because everybody got to remember the system is, financial director is the contracting officer for this county. Everything that is purchased on a purchase order has to be approved by a finance director, regardless whether you're in an emergency right now or whether you're not. It still goes to there, no long range. Paid it out your own bank account.
Okay. This has been a little convoluted since the motion began, where we're not following standard procedure. So, I'll have to get us back in line. And so, we have a motion on the floor with a friendly amendment suggested. Do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
And are we, are you still second time?
Yes, ma'am.
That was just any time of discussion and I will repeat to you what the clerk's office has stated to me, based on the new Elizabeth and Starr headlines, she cannot advertise it with five days' notice and have you meet next Thursday.
Well, if you can't, you can't. I mean, you know.
The best I can tell you is announce the first meeting here tonight at this special call, emergency meeting. Announce that to the public here tonight and get it in the paper as soon as possible so that all the future meetings are, like I said, at the end of the day, there cannot be an official vote that binds anything at the meeting anyway.
That's correct.
So, that'd be my suggestion. Announce the first meeting day and time tonight at this meeting and from thereafter, publish every day as quick as you can get it in the paper. And you don't have to use Elizabeth and Starr, there's another vice.
Okay, we're still in discussion, does another commissioner have something to say? Commissioner Smith?
One thing we do probably need to look at, take into consideration, we need to remember that we've not elected our officers for the committees for the time that's coming up. And the way our financial management and budget is set up, we could quite possibly have the same two people representing both the committees and you end up with two people being the only ones overlooking the budget. So, if you had the vice chair and the chair in financial management elected to chair and vice chair of budget, you only have two individuals involved in decision-making. Or the overview.
No decisions.
Well, I've said the overview, but still, you've cut it from four to two right there. If that's something we're willing to do.
Well, until those committees meet again, if the current chairman and vice chairman that we're serving, if they're still on those committees, are still in those offices as of right now, as long as those people are still on the committees.
And I understand that, since we are going into, our next meetings, we're going to be electing the chair and the vice chair of those committees. So, there is a possibility that the new members could be two people. I bet it's going to happen, but it is a distinct possibility it could happen.
Would it be possible for right now for things to go and after they have that meeting, then come back to this motion and put things into, because nobody can guess at who's going to be elected and I understand what you're saying, Todd.
Keep in mind, these are open meetings that any of you all and any member of the public can come to and see all the information, just because you're not a named member doesn't mean you can't come to every one of them and see the same information. And nobody can vote.
Right.
Wait for their dates, this is an emergency, don't act like the government.
I think what he's trying to say though, if I understand this, you're on the same people that are on financial management or on budget. So, when you have your election, it's possible that y'all are going to be the vice chair or chair on both committees. So, then that puts only two people on here on both committees instead of possibly other people looking into it, is that what I'm understanding?
Exactly.
All right, the floor is now on Jason Klossman's hands.
If that happens, we can change it. We can come back and say, okay, that happened, I had two different people and we're still moving forward and.
Keep that in mind when you're actually electing those people, right? Because you know, we're going to like to, the chair, vice chair are going to be on this, that hasn't happened yet, so you could.
But if we do and we don't like that, we can come back and change who's on that.
Mr. Brown.
It's called a vote.
We now have to vote on the call for the vote, correct, sir?
Call for the vote.
Mr. Brown made a motion, please call for the vote. Okay, so, we are now going to be voting on stopping discussion to vote on a motion on the floor. So, your vote right now is yes or no to stop discussion. Please call the roll.
Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Nick Colder?
Yes.
Robert DeCave?
Aye.
Nancy Brown?
Yes.
Avery Nguyen?
Yes.
Julie Nguyen?
Yes.
Bradley Johnson?
Yes.
Steve Burra?
Yes.
Angie Odom?
Yes.
Danny Deal?
Yes.
Gary Kemp?
Aye.
Jerry Prophet?
Yes.
Lisa Childers?
Yes.
Junior Holdren?
Yes.
Charlene Thomas?
Yes.
Connie Cable? Jason Klossman?
Yes.
Todd Smith?
Yes.
Jason Radsney?
Yes.
Leslie Hughes?
Yes.
Aaron Frazier?
Aye.
Larry, Jerry Stoudt?
Yes.
Kelly Collins?
Yes.
Thomas Prophet?
Yes.
Okay, so, call for the vote has passed. We are now voting on the motion on the floor, which is to have the chair and vice chair of budget committee and financial management committee make weekly on Thursdays at 4:30 and to have an overview of the expenditures and planned expenditures. Please call the roll.
Are you adding this special call, emergency meeting, on the 10th in the motion?
We are announcing it tonight publicly, don't need it to be in that. I do not believe so, do we, attorney-honor?
No, no, you're going to announce that meeting tonight and publish from the 10th forward every Thursday, don't be mean.
Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Nick Colder?
Yes.
Robert DeCave?
Aye.
Nancy Brown?
Yes.
Avery Nguyen?
Yes.
Julie Nguyen?
Yes.
Bradley Johnson?
Yes.
Steve Burra?
Yes.
Angie Odom?
Yes.
Danny Deal?
Yes.
Gary Kemp?
Yes.
Jerry Prophet?
Yes.
Lisa Childers?
Yes.
Junior Holdren?
Yes.
Charlene Thomas?
Yes.
Jason Klossman?
Yes.
Todd Smith?
Yes.
Jason Radsney?
Yes.
Leslie Hughes?
Yes.
Aaron Frazier?
Yes.
Jerry Stoudt?
Yes.
Kelly Collins?
Yes.
Thomas Prophet?
Yes.
Motion passes. Director Watson?
I need to bring up one other thing and our trustees here tonight too, so I wanted to make sure that I was clear on if we are in a situation where we needed to borrow from ourselves from other funds. According to the comptroller's office, that is allowable to go ahead and do even if we have not gone through and moved it through budget or had it approved through commission. So, that would force that fund to possibly go negative, but as long as that's only a temporary situation, the comptrollers are fine with that. That would only be needed in a certain situation, but if we have something that is urgent that needs to be addressed immediately, then we do have that flexibility as long as we are under emergency status. Once we're not under emergency status anymore, of course, that goes away and everything has to be cleared up.
You have that ready?
But if I don't, I will get it because I have a two-page email because I had a hour and 40-minute discussion with Neil yesterday and going through all of this. I've also talked to our team of consultants and I've talked to our new consultants about this as well, that this is normal protocol in an emergency situation. So, if it's not, I'm pretty sure it's in this email, if not, I will get that clarification.
Is Lisa the chair of the commission, I'd like to see that. Thank you, do you have anything else, Chris?
I don't think so.
And Chair, Director Watson, you do have one more item. Donations to the county.
Yes, I've got two or three, thank you. So, donations for the county, we have set up with the United Way, the local United Way, it's East Tennessee Highlands. They have given us links to do that and a way for people that are not within the community to contribute to that. They are aware that it is our wish that all of this goes through to Carter County, they have agreed to that. They are the only not-for-profit that I spoke with that will not be taking any type of administrative fee out of the funds that they receive. Every single dollar they receive goes to Carter County. We've pushed that out on Facebook and other media platforms, so that is out in the community now and people are aware of it. If someone wanted to make donations locally, there is an account set up at Carter County Bank and they are expecting those donations. The name of the account is the Carter County Disaster Relief Fund. So, if anybody wants to make those donations, we more than appreciate that and I know there have been several organizations outside of the area that have wanted to make donations to the county and we're very appreciative of that.
Director Watson, in my conversation with Bank President Andrew McKean, he said that the checks have to be made out to United Way of Northeast Tennessee and the Carter County Disaster Relief Fund goes on a memo line.
That's the name on the account, but yes, the United Way will be administering these funds. We as a county government have to account for them, probably if we take them in-house. Comptroller's Office recommendation was that they be given to the not-for-profit upfront with the agreement that that's how it would be handled, you know, here accounting at your end and through the comptroller's office, much simpler if we go through that not-for-profit, so that's what we did. Yeah, sorry, thank you for that clarification.
I just wanted to go on the air correctly and for the commissioners to be able to share that with their constituents to make the checks to the United Way of Northeast Tennessee, put that on the memo line, so it stays in Carter County, please.
Couple of other things if anybody asks, payroll did get processed normally. We were not able to get time sheets in, obviously, because of the disaster and employees not being in the office, so, but we've gotten that part taken care of, it did get processed today. Thank you to the trustee's office for coming in and helping us with their part of that. We had two employees that have been in here that, you know, they've been through this disaster just like everybody else, but they came in to make sure that that got done so that our employees in the county got paid and I know they need that money. Let's see. I think we've covered everything else. I do thank Tima for being here, they've all been great and I appreciate everything that you all have done. It's been very helpful. And I appreciate you all being here too, they've been very helpful as well.
Okay, and would they be changed? Commissioner, are you going to continue on?
We could take a five.
Let's please solidify, follow up with change. Let's please solidify, follow up with James.
Really should have a five-minute break and then we go to public.
We have a helicopter, we'll move it on down. Ask Manny. Oh gosh.
Like you follow my head.
They lost, they're eighty-three, my father's eighty-three, he had Parkinson's at later stages. And he was setting my mother, who's eighty-one, where she'd have something to fall back on. Five rental properties. Two commercial garages. Industrial equipment, vacuums. In one hour, a lifetime of work, three generations. I'm not saying that the logging company, that Unica, that they forest products, that they are solely a problem. It is a contributing factor. I work in industry. I work as a safety manager. And we've learned to be proactive, and that's what I'm asking you guys to be. Don't do this a third time. Be proactive. See that some berms, not just regular berms built, but some retention walls. And, you know, have drains for if anything gets on that side. The camp is still there. The logging company's still there. The trailer park is still there, it's on that side of the river. But everything downstream is gone. Not just my place, but everybody's place, the high school. So, three hundred thousand dollars are getting ready to do some rebuilding? Maybe we'll have to. So, commissioners, look at this. Right now, you're at payment stages where demo, yeah, I'm demoing everything over the house. And we built back. Look at these, well, look at this company. And they've staged everything right on the bike because it's large. And it's destroyed. In the past, they said, they have the land, we can't dictate what they do. But you can dictate the safety of others because they pay taxes. We pay taxes. But now your flood site is much bigger. It just grew tremendously. Value is appreciated. So, do help us. Look into that, look into. Never let it happen again. How's the logage? How's this? He does your prayer.
Thank you. And we want to extend our deep sympathies to you. So sorry. Does anybody else want to come forward and speak to them?
Madam Chair, could I stay out here and speak?
Yes, sir.
I'll try. We'll stand up for sure. Everybody knows that tax season's moving in. The state sent the file to us today, and we've loaded taxes. So, just letting you know that everybody's gonna be receiving a tax notice. And there's nothing I can do about it. It's by law that we send them out, okay? But please let your people know that, you know, they have until February the twenty-eighth to pay it. And then after that, it goes up one and a half percent each month after. We're working with the state to see what we can do about this. I know our assessor, Shane Semerly, he's gonna be working extremely hard. I know he already has. He's had a team, a couple of teams going out doing assessments to help with getting our funds coming back in quicker. So, just wanna let you all know that we are gonna be sending tax notices out. They're gonna go out the twenty-first of this month. You can pay your taxes as of this coming Monday, okay? That's the first day that we can legally take payment. But please, please let these people know that this is, this, these tax notices were already on the printer way before this flood happened, okay? I can't retract it. It's by law that we send them out, okay? No, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. It is not by law that we send them out. I don't have to send them out, but we do as a courtesy to the county, okay? If we didn't do that, you know, we would probably not be collecting as much as we do. We are expecting to have low, lower collections, and it is very understandable. Been in some of these places the past couple of days, it's just unreal. Can you even imagine what these people are going through? But just let everybody know if you can, we really appreciate it.
And anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, then we will go to Commissioner Thomas. Sorry, Commissioner, yes, Ms. Charlie Thomas.
I mentioned to a few people, I have been approached by the Lutheran Church in Johnson City. They have a team coming tomorrow. Five professional wood cutters, trimmers, fire, I mean, loggers. They will pay for everything. They're gonna house these guys, but they need a job. They're coming up from Knoxville, they need work. They're gonna be here tomorrow afternoon. So, the perfect scenario would be for us to hand them a list of places to go. Home, they can clean driveways, they can do whatever needs to be done. It won't cost anybody a penny. But if we can't put them to work here, then I'm gonna send them up to Newland. Or over the camp, over the state line, and let them work in North Carolina. But if you have people in your area who need trees removed, please let me know tonight or first thing in the morning.
How can the people reach out to you?
They can call me on my four-two-three, four-eight-three, four-six-six-five.
What's that, four-two-three?
Four-eight-three, four-six-six-five. And it isn't on the website, so we need to get that on there. Check that today for that very reason.
One more time, Charlotte, four-eight-three, four-six-six-five?
Yes.
Okay, anybody wants to reach out to Commissioner Thomas about the tree cutters? Okay, Commissioner, open.
Well, come up here, because I just got some information I wanna make sure y'all take back to your districts. To let you know, first of all, thank everybody, I think all the commissioners. Gary knew to drive and not ride with me, he's driving trucks around Roanoke. Aicup, he's risked his life. Avery's been down a whole lot getting some of it. Julie's been up, there's just so many of y'all that's been helping. Todd's always up there. You know, I just love Lisa, everybody that's come together and that's helped. So, I'm like everybody else, I've cried enough, too. My eyes are swollen, but I just, it's just part of life right now, isn't it, guys? God's been good, and he's supplied a lot of things that all of us has needed. So, I just wanna say, from the TLC side, I think this is what's going on. And I had some ideas after hearing Jason and stuff, so just throw it out there, and I'll wait around if you wanna talk. Today, my cancer opened up Unica High School. It will be open all the time from twelve to three. There are showers, we have volunteers manning it. We also have lots of milk that we can share, Carton Milk, Mayfield showed up. We have got two thousand milks, we have a total of ten thousand that we can get. We have been agriculture building, and I'm pretty much all over Hampton right now, and real supermarket. But if your district needs any small milks, same with Roanoke Mountain. All we need is coolers to put them in, and Mayfield will bring more. Because schools are out, they have a contract, they're ready to donate the milk, chocolate and white. Also, let me go back down here with Stony Creek, so that's going on there. Of course, the TLC, we feed daily, but it needs food. Right now, we are feeding the EOC buildings, National Guards, the ones in the office and out, the ones at the airport. Courtyard Apartments, we were made aware of today, that there's about forty little ladies, their place was affected. They haven't had hot food, so we put them on there all the time, that's just right next door to the courthouse. Cove Creek, we're running side-by-sides up there. Every house has been visited by our team, you know, our volunteers. And my daughters took the lead on that one. Shell Creek, Calf Up the Way, you can get, but after I dress four-twenty-one up, it gets a little more rocky than. Yeah, up in that gated community, though, there's a lot of older people, so we're taking food there every day. I wanted to ask if EMS needs to be fed, so I need to know that one about the rescue squad. And my concern that I got, and that's why I went to the EOC before the meeting, is Elizabethan High School was set up with the bus to have them be fed through all this, they were unhooking, because they said they went from feeding two-hundred and something to only eighty to a hundred. They're, from what I understand, they're gonna be here still for the end of the week down there. They're the ones sleeping in the Elizabethan High School. So, you'll get back with me or one of the guys to let me know. We have food ready to go for them tomorrow, we can, we'll pick up another hundred there. If you all have workers in your district, I want the highway department, all of the departments, sheriff's department, we will feed you. I have in Hampton, we have the shower trailer, we had it first at our place, we didn't have water, we moved it to Stony Creek. Now, the shower trailer is at the Hampton Fire Department. In addition to at the Hampton Fire Department, Hampton First Baptist has been amazing, they've opened up their church to us. The National Guards work in there, they were needing porta potties, that's what they were asking me for. Instead, the church said, no, use the bathrooms. So, every day, they're in the bathrooms, that's where I'm having food trucks. And today, guys, we got a circus tent, a forty-by-seventy, this is our circus, and we are the monkeys, okay? So, when I say that, it's been raining all those National Guard workers. While we arrived this morning, a lady was screaming down at her home that is almost demolished anyway. A person was in there trying to rob her, one street from where we were standing. So, when I say that, I know we need extra, I know y'all are out and about, but when we do have these supplies, they're in Hampton around that area. We had a clothing trailer out there today, all kinds of stuff, we do need to probably have somebody check on them. All these people volunteering from time to time, but those individuals, that just broke my heart. I'm working on food trailers, if you need one for your district, I know we have the TLCs, I can use it anywhere y'all want it. And I've got some ideas for elk meals that I really wanna talk to you about, about the food trailers. But if you want one for your district, have a list of food trailers, and when we'll feed for free, tell us where to go. We're gonna always have one there at Hampton, at the first, at Hampton First Baptist. We're gonna keep food there, because we've, we talked, that's a good central location for all the work being done, whether they're going through Roanoke Mountain or talk to that current Patty, that you feel that that's still a central good location, okay? So, that's central, we got Hampton. We've got, you probably are doing this, but I have just given you a suggestion. WBEJ, a lot don't have anything else, but a lot of people are turning on WBEJ in their car or whatever, it's local. If there's any way throughout the day to do multiple updates of anywhere they can eat or pick up things even more so. But then they said in the future, as soon as there's an emergency, if there's any way to get more information, some of these little older people say they leave it planned all the time, that was one idea. I do have lots of groups coming from out of town, just like what she said. I've been contacted from Pennsylvania, Pittsburgh, you name it. I've got three tractor and trailers of all of those cords, I've got three hundred thousand dollars' worth of cords coming in by Saturday that go to the generators. We wanna get that out to your all of the district. I need to know which of you all that I can call, that you'll come and get it, and you'll take it into your district and disperse this stuff. And then we're gonna have a central location for the extra, and then, of course, getting it up to you. As far as elk meals, my thought is, food trucks, there was a logging guy, I know that you know the back way, it takes longer to get there, but he traveled the road, he feels he can pull in our food trucks. I agree with you for a trip, food trucks, feed everybody hot food as much as they can eat all day long, and then leave out before dark. When you want to do it, you feel you're ready for it. I also got two or three pallets of emergency food boxes, got it ready to be or lifted there tomorrow. Patty, if you wanna work out, get it there, it's right there at the TLC, and I learned to use a forklift, so now I can load it up for you. So, we got that, right. We haven't met, there was a person contacting me that is totally separate, they have access to helicopter. They're picking up all the medical supplies, oxygen and insulin. Anybody that needs it, up there too, got the phone number, all you gotta do is tell us, and they will arrange that one as well. Let's see, last thing, told you that one. I think that's it, just anybody, the only thing I'm really good at is feeding people and just trying to network. But I don't know all about this highway and all this other stuff, but I just wanna say, I just, I don't wanna hear anybody going hungry. And so, we are kicking at massive levels. We're taking up toys for kids, have enough clothes that we can all, I mean, we can close all this county over and over. And this isn't me doing it, these are people coming together. But I do have to say and end with this, Patty said she's already gonna take care of it, somebody else already talked to the EOC. I could show you right now about thirty-something text messages, it's not even an hour before we're supposed to be here. The American Red Cross is running everybody off. Raise your hand if you've already heard it, I just wanna know. Okay. Our center's flooded with hot food tonight, because all these people that were already taking it and feeding it, the Red Cross said, sorry, we can't take your food, and sent them away. They have sent truck, truck and trailers away today with water. They said, we only need two pallets, we don't want anymore. They offloaded the rest of the Stony Creek Fire Department. I went to the EOC, the EOC said, down there, they said, they're not a part of anything or anything. We need to have an immediate contact with whoever's over there, or also having.
I'll just go tell you, I'm gonna scorch the earth with them. Give that big name.
Our volunteers are not allowed.
Scorch the earth with them, what they have come in here and done to the citizens of this county.
Yes, they want to offer volunteers.
I've already had two phone calls with them, I'm gonna scorch the earth with them. They're not gonna come in here and treat my citizens like this. I can tell you right now, I'm gonna scorch the earth with them, and they will not, I'm out of this county. They've done nothing but remove people, we've had nothing but trouble with them.
Yes.
I can promise you right now, I will scorch the earth with them when this is over.
Well, we need them to now quit running off our volunteers. Jake Jenkins called me from the school. He, they, they pretty much told him off and said he has an illegal something going on up there, illegal site that he shouldn't be doing. Oh, that's another thing, they needed a hundred meals for breakfast at the school, so we're taking that up to the schools up in Hampton. But he asked, help us, help me do something. So, I'm just telling you all, we're losing some volunteers at one of the sites, they delivered food, they said, we don't need it, but they loaded up and said, we're gonna take it to another county. Those individuals are saying, why should I bring them down to Carter County if you're taking away? So, if we don't do something quick, we're gonna lose our volunteers, and we're gonna lose some resources coming to us. So, I'm just making you aware, if you get these calls, they're gonna take care of it. So, obviously, I'm just letting you know, beware, you're gonna hear it all. And if you don't, that might be, you know, you're not right around where they're calling. But I've got volunteers to clean up trash, that tree, clean houses, I've got supplies. All I need you to do is tell me an address, and we will have them there. If you have somebody can't get out, we will have them there. So, please call, my cellphone isn't working, you gotta call the landline at the center, or my mom. My mom is my new secretary, because she lives next door. I will tell you the number to the center right now. The center line is five-four-three, four-six-seven-three, five-four-three, four-six-seven-three. I have two men staying all night there, all night, because we have so many supplies outside and forklifts and everything else. Also, my mom's number, I'm being honest, I'll tell them, because if I'm, I'm trying to, you know, if I'm home for a little while. It's five-four-two, four-three-five-eight, that's how you can reach me, because there are deliveries, honestly, that we're getting called about in the middle of the night. Right now, that's the only way I can get service until it's back down. Any questions, I'll be here, or if you need help, tell me who to help. Thank you.
Commissioner, you have a question?
I have a question. Just going to Elizabethan Hospital parking lot, they, whoever is around from about seven p.m.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, about seven p.m.
Okay.
It will be one hundred people, that's how much money is there. Down there, it will be one hundred people tomorrow.
Where's it going?
Elizabethan Hospital parking lot.
So, that can feed these, those emergency workers that are sleeping in the sun?
That's the intention.
That's more, so we don't only worry about lunch tomorrow and not supper?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne, did you have your name up to speak?
Yes.
Okay, loud, remember, Avery, loud.
I have a megaphone I'm bringing for you.
Okay. I've heard of the Red Cross running people off, and I've heard of them trying not to feed people. I don't know whether all of it's true or not, but if that's what they're doing, maybe it's time we ran the Red Cross out of here. Because they're hurting more than they're helping. And I've heard this in the past, and I've seen it in the past in hurricanes in Florida, where they've run people off. They take all the funding they can get, and they will stash it for another emergency somewhere else. They won't use it for that emergency. So, I think it's time, we might run them out of Carter County. That's my thoughts.
What I can tell you, I was sitting in Roanoke Mountain Volunteer Fire Department when two rescue workers came in who had went by the Red Cross. And they gave these rescue workers food, and the guys turned around to walk away. And they said, oh, wait, we can't feed you, it's just for evacuees. So, they made those two resc, search and rescue guys, put the food back. I will just tell you, I was living. They come to our budget committee, they bring a request for money every year, and I cannot see giving them anything. And I'm gonna remember this in three months' time, I promise you, and I'm not gonna let this go. How you can embarrass a rescue, search and rescue guys who have been out clearing cars, clearing houses, clearing woods, clearing everything else, and do that is just unfathomable.
They're not swimming down the river, what's wrong with you all, my friend?
But I just wanted y'all to know that, because when this comes up, I'm gonna worry you back up.
All right, if I can hear everybody, I know you're getting a little restless, but I wanna give each person that desires to speak a chance to be heard, so I'm very pleased they're based off their private conversations.
Question is, what's it gonna take to put them out of Carter County?
Send them to the podium.
Okay.
We'll send them out.
Commissioner Dill. Commissioner Dill has a floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, on the airdrops from the airport, the air, supply drops. So, when speaking with the EOC today, one of the representatives, I can't remember his name, he came up and told me about that everything was going pretty smooth, so he didn't feel like we needed to go through the EOC for anybody that had any demands. If they have special demands, of course, they will let us know. But he's, him and the flight commander, the flight commander don't wanna have to coordinate these supplies either. So, me or Nick, if you got anybody that needs anything, well, we're doing a airdrop. Just shoot me and Nick a text, an email, call us, whatever, and we'll make sure they get it. We have one Black Hawk that's dedicated to Carter County, the other two are dedicated, one to Washington County, one to Unicoi. But the flight commander is, we've worked with dropping supplies off as they go to those counties. So, like today, one was headed to Unicoi County, they made a water drop at Happy Valley High School on the football field. So, we got multiple drops in today, I think we depleted a lot of stock at some of the hubs that Ginger's been trying to coordinate for us. So, it's working really well. Tomorrow's gonna be a nice day, so we look to really put some supplies out there. We wanna keep it to where nobody's really needing anything, if we can, if that's possible. So, if you got any requests, please just send them to me or Nick, we'll make sure to get them. Thank you.
You're gonna talk about one designated person?
I just like to, I just to say, Nancy, you have a floor.
I'd just like to thank all the volunteers that's come in here to help us get straightened out. And all the commission for working as hard as they have. Our community, I've never been so proud of our community as I am right now. I mean, I've had people from all over call, how can we help, you know? When I finally got service for a few minutes and then it went out, but it's amazing how people has worked together. And I'd just like to say thank you, you know, God's with us, we can do anything.
Okay, Commissioner Aicup.
Just very quickly to follow up on Commissioner Dill's comment. It would help us that are involved down at the airport, if you had all of the locations that we're flying to, if you had one designated person, he or Nick can communicate with. As Danny pointed out, they don't need to be passing messages to the flight commander or the crew to bring back a message to us that they need something. So, we need to, we don't wanna overburden our Army Park. They have, they have done yelping work. Best folks that we've had, they came in with a can-do attitude, and they have delivered every day. So, we need, just need to find one point person at each of the places that Black Hawks are flying in and dropping food, supplies, et cetera. And don't pass notes to members of the crew or call the flight commander and say, we need such and such and so and so. So, we need to, we need to make sure we've got that communication going to Danny or to Nick. Thank you.
So, basically, also, that sounds like something that you would almost be the number one to help us get that one point person per drop location?
I can, I mean, I know what's going on elk meals, I'll find out for sure who the point person is, it's been me on the, on the top end. I have, if, and if, I mean, here's the thing, it can't be always me, because if I'm not standing in front of my Starlink, I don't have communication. I've got people that's at my house twenty-four-seven, it's gonna be somebody there. I can't be, it can't be just one person, because we might have somebody, we've got a nurse sitting there, and we got an emergency, go send them out. It can't be one person at my place, and I don't think it's gonna be that way at elk meals, we can have three or four that can rotate. But I don't know, we, have we done, done that with you?
If you can funnel the information, just like for Pine Grove today, that was a new drop, so, location. So, if, if elk meals, Pine Grove, and then where you're at, if you can coordinate that, just say, hey, I'm your point person, you let me know what you need, and then you can get that information to us, and we'll get it on there and get it talked.
The problem is, I don't know who's at Pine Grove, I never got a contact at Pine Grove. I got up there, I've got, we got the Starlink set up today, and that's where the rescue is at. We got the stuff there, we got it in the center, there's nobody in that center, there's nobody watching, I've not got any contact from who that is. I said it there, and it's an open door unlocked, so I don't know who the Pine Grove is.
I don't doubt a name on that Pine Grove drop channel.
I was totally put supplies on there. You know, speak about this.
Yeah, we're gonna regroup on that, cause.
So, through our existing command system, that is, that is our goal. Our drop points through the helicopter system, through the National Guard, we have notifications, we have drop point notifications other than the Pine Grove. We're working on that situation, we had an issue because of the National Guard originally, we had notification made that we were able to supply that in their operation hours. That was not the case, because due to military rules and regulations, that their team cannot make that. We're still working on that, that, that is something that my operations team, I have not been there since I've been here. We're working on that, as far as I know, that, that hopefully will have an answer by mid-afternoon tomorrow on that.
I mean, I wasn't comfortable with that, but I've done what you asked, and I put it up there, and I unlocked door. And, and they was the people that I suspected had been coming to my place, sitting there waiting for that drop, that we had said, you know, gave you all you need for right now, and they wanted more, and they were sitting right there at an open door.
So, we pulled, we pulled the generator off the ship because it being a bigger money item.
I didn't, I didn't, wasn't up there that exact drop. So, I sent the people from my plates up there, and the first thing they said, where's our generator? And they, I had done turned down the generator, because we had one left, we had took them to auction people, we did not have an extra generator. The lady that had auction, Hertz, went down. The lady that had auction, Hertz, went down, so today we went and swapped it down with that extra one. They wanted it, I said, what's your medical need, we don't have one. They just wanted it. I was like, I can't let you have it when there's people in this community that needs it for medical. So then they come to somebody else, request it, get it airdropped in, and ask us to leave it at an open unlocked shelter. And I done it, because I was told to, I was not comfortable with it.
Do you have somebody else with a medical need that needs a generator?
I ju, I heard of one today, but, um, we had a local church that had an extra generator. I left, because we had all this stuff going, the people at my place was going to find out, and it makes sure they had the medical need and was taking this generator to the church.
I got four new generators delivered for the meeting, but I have a couple promised, but I do have an extra couple of generators. And I'm supposed to get a shipment of some more.
This gentleman here's just got some lined up, but I don't have that anymore.
We still have four, so we can drop you, if you need a generator, we got four, so we can drop them.
With what he's doing, I mean, we've got them, um, you know, we, we'll take as many as we can get. We'll give them to everybody in the community if we can, because they're gonna be at the power plant at some time. But, you know, if there's a need somewhere else, I don't want to take those generators from somewhere else, because we do have some right now to start giving to the most needy.
I've got those courts covered, and that's gonna help.
We need that, for sure.
And what, you just tell me how many you all, and we'll make sure, I mean, we'll just drop a big load, you know, of them, I'll get with Danny and and Nick here, and we'll get that.
Appreciate that very much.
Jason Carson, you've been here for...
For a little while, what do you, what do you want to say to us today?
I just, when I, when I was thinking, everybody, and got emotional, I forgot Leslie. Leslie has answered my call all through the night, I don't know when she sleeps. She's answered my call all through the night, they don't sleep, they need some rest. But I just, I can't appreciate you enough, when I'm up there with no communication, and I know I can get a hold of you. That means the world, I mean, I, I, I so appreciate that. Cause you, I just don't know, for me, what, like, people driving in my driveway today, oh my God, we got a medical need, what do we do? Cause nobody has nine-one-one or nothing. I know, I can call on you all, and I have done that, and you've been there for me. And there's people that I don't even know that's been a part of that, and I just want to thank everybody that's been a part of that. But thank you all for answering my call when I call. That's what I want.
Is it okay to ask him to tell us his names, because I think we all know he's so secluded? Would you, I'd like to see you in person?
Some kind of mental nerve pill, uh, brain, uh, is my needs, but... It's a joke, now?
Um, I'm thinking that with the meeting in Jersey, those of you that need to coordinate plans.
I can stay as long as I need to, actually.
Let's, let's don't make that far about our meeting, let's continue on with our meeting. Uh, can you stand across the floor?
I won't even stand up, because I've got a big, big mouth, or so I've been told. First of all, uh, I want to thank everybody on, on part of Hampton, Valley Forge, Sixth District. And, and to just give you some idea of how widespread the damage was, me and Jason live literally a few miles apart.
We do, much more now.
Yeah, and we didn't even speak to each other until yesterday. So, so that was a big deal, and I appreciate, we get, we got Starlink set up at Hampton Fire Department yesterday to help the people in that area, uh, they were supposed to go to, uh, Valley Forge Christian Church today and set up another Starlink at the Fellowship Hall there, because they've been serving hot meals at lunch every day. So that, that will help everybody. Uh, and I can't tell you how much I, I appreciate what Jason's done, and I've told him, I, I can't imagine how anybody else would have handled it, but the right guy was there and it ended it. I want to thank Julie, because I don't even think she's aware, but when she posted online, watch out Hampton, it's coming, we didn't have anything, and when she posted that, I left the house, and before I could get across the road, having backed through, it was flooded. So Julie, thank you. As the gentleman said here, this is not our first bout on Spring Street in Hampton or down through the bottom in Valley Forge. Uh, our own fire chief in Hampton, Chris Isaac, he lost his grandparents in ninety-eight. So he, he is very aware, and, and he makes very good points. But, but thank all of you, uh, the, the Starlink system has made such, you would think, food and water, uh, all that, you know, when you can't even reach out and tell someone, hey, I'm safe, or are you safe? That made all the difference in the world, and I know the mayor helped make that happen yesterday, uh, so I thank her. Things are coming along great on Spring Street in Hampton, it really is. I went down yesterday, and it looked like somebody had dumped an ant farm down there, there was just people going everywhere, just, it warmed my heart. We still have a big area down the bottom in Valley Forge, they're just barely scratching the surface down there. Uh, and what I've seen down there, the whole community, there may be two homes that are gonna be salvaged from that. So it, so it's a wide area, so if you know someone that's needing, that has excavation equipment and, and want to put it to work, head down there into what we've always called the bottom, I think it's called River Bottom now, uh, but they could use the help. The National Guard that came in made a ton of difference, we've unloaded six trucks at Hampton Fire Department from yesterday. We even have fresh tomatoes, so if you want to make a tomato sandwich, come up, we can make you a tomato sandwich. But I thank Angie, she's been a big help, uh, when we weren't able to get messages out and tell people what we needed, five trucks showed up. So I thank Angie, and I know this, the community appreciates it more than you could ever understand. But I thank all of you.
Yes, Miss Hughes.
I've sent you all emails over the past few days, and my dear diary that I've sent out every night, and tried to, and thank you all for reaching out and, um, commenting back, what can you do? After the initial twenty-four, forty-eight hours, and that initial emergency was over, you all, every one of you were contacting me in some way, and I asked them where you could go, and I'm sorry if I didn't have an answer immediately, because there's so much stuff going on, um. But please reach out to your first responders, to all, I mean, these crews have been out nonstop, um, these guys haven't slept either. Um, it's, it's been nonstop for every one of them, so reach out to them, tell them thank you for what they've done. At nine-one-one that day, um, and I pulled these reports today, John, I'm gonna get you exact numbers tomorrow, but I pulled the reports today, and we average about seven hundred nine-one-one calls in a week. And that's just nine-one-one, not the admin lines, not the non-emergency calls, but nine-one-one calls, seven hundred one week. That day, we took over seven hundred and ten or more in, from eight a.m. on, in just one day. We had eleven people in the dispatch room taking calls, and it was the worst thing that I've ever been through, as far as having to tell people to get on the roof. And not notice, like, if someone was gonna get to them. Because no matter what, no matter where the problem was, from Roan Mountain, and then it just went to Hampton and Valley Forge, it was like, we still didn't know if the people in Hampton were okay by the time I got to the city. We had over a hundred calls open at one time. So I just want to say thank you, and we really appreciate it, I mean, everybody stopped in at nine-one-one and talked to us, and but check on these other guys too. We're not okay, we won't be for a while, but we'll get there.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Um, my question is more pertaining to the cleanup and different things like that is going on. Has FEMA or FEMA already started visiting homes and taking pictures and different things like that as of yet?
Yes.
And what do people, and there are people that are acting in bad faith, the reason I'm asking is, there are people that are acting in bad faith, and showing up and telling people they can, to tell, hey, we, and we'll start cleanup, and other things. I'm just curious, what people need to ask for, what people need to look for, to know that whoever is contacting them is an official resource, and from FEMA or FEMA or something like that, so...
So damage assessment teams have already been out, mayor's already told you that you guys are light years ahead of the counties around you. Um, the next steps, now that you've been declared, FEMA will come, I mean FEMA, I apologize. FEMA coming in Friday, moves on the ground, figure out where they're gonna put what they're called, she called it the command position, it's gonna be a disaster recovery center, that's the next step. Seven to fourteen days, they'll set up that disaster recovery center, and then they will push out tons of information so that your community has a way to get in, get info to FEMA. When FEMA gets on the ground, they will have their crews going out and doing damage assessment, just like these damage assessments do, it's kind of a, a, a double. They will always have a FEMA badge. They will have, they will have a chip on the bottom of that badge, it'll say FEMA, it'll have their name, even if they're from here, they will be identified as FEMA. So if somebody comes up to the door and they say they're FEMA, tell them that's for their badge. If they don't have a badge that says they're FEMA, we'll leave it. We, we put out, even while we've been here tonight, there's been some social media posts put out that FEMA and FEMA have gone out and confiscated stuff from donation centers. False. FEMA has put out a social media post, put it out on the news, that is false. FEMA nor FEMA would ever go out and do that. So if, if they are truly FEMA, and they're going out doing the, the damage assessments or anything like that, they will have a badge. If you see any of the FEMA representatives out, they will more than likely be in their military, FEMA Department of Military, sure, and they will have a ID badge. So if they don't have those credentials, they're not, they're not with FEMA or FEMA.
And in this community, people are going to ask those things, this is not going to be upsetting to those, um, I just don't want to cause a butt head between a citizen and somebody that is actually from FEMA, you know?
FEMA, uh, I, I can tell you from experience, from having, uh, a natural disaster in my home county, where I'm from, we had to deal with it, just like you guys, not in any of the scale that you're dealing with, by any means. But I can tell you, I had a friend about the community who was going, are you from FEMA, show me your badge? And FEMA will gladly say, here it is. And if you have a question, call your local enforcement, call the non-emergency number, don't override nine-one-one, call the non-emergency number and say, hey, do you have FEMA in that area? That's perfectly, I think Leslie would back me up on that, um, and with the sheriff. So, but they should have a credential badge, that they are truly with FEMA.
You, sorry, I just gotta ask, were, were you or with FEMA, um, or FEMA, this, this thing? One-on-one last night in Hampton, because we, I was doing the food truck, the entire families are there, and they said, we're, I said, why are you here, and they said, well, we were told to be at our house, because FEMA is meeting with us. So someone is doing this in Hampton, because that lady just had a brand-new baby, and it's five days old, and I know the family, they're on the hardest-hit street. They were all dressed, and they were excited, I need to...
They will have a credential like that, and I will push this out, I will push a, a mock-up of that out on social media.
Yeah, well, I think when we, when we, yeah, I just want to ask you if we can do that.
Yes.
Let the citizens know when this starts, you're to ask for identification, what it looks like.
Yes, it will go out personally in the morning, so they know what to look, what to look for. But there is no, I can say this emphatically, there is no FEMA on the ground right now in Carter County, or any county in North, in North Tennessee. So if, if somebody says that, and that they're FEMA, call off.
Three different families told me that at our food truck last night, yesterday.
So just to, in, in complete transparency with everyone, we did have FEMA on the ground, excuse me, yesterday. Excuse me, in all the affected communities and counties in East Tennessee. Now, that was a rapid FEMA individual assistance damage assessment. The reason it was quiet, I just want to make sure.
But then would not have come to a house like that.
Oh, okay.
No, no, so, so yesterday, when we were here in Carter County, we had a two-vehicle convoy of my state vehicle and my partner's state vehicle, we had Shannon. Uh, Shannon was with us, and we had one FEMA representative. We slow rolled through, so, in our vehicles, through a few areas, so that the FEMA representative was able to take photographic documentation of homes and, uh, that were damaged, that were destroyed, that had been, excuse me, impacted by the storm. Now, we do keep, we do roll with our windows down, that way we're able to talk to the residents, because we want to, you know, we're here to help, I don't want to, you know, come off as standoffish. So, excuse me, we did talk to some people, uh, from the vehicle, but, uh, you know, when we go out and do these, oftentimes we'll turn on our emergency lights on our vehicle, and every now and then we may have to get out on foot, but that was...
You didn't set up a point.
Excuse me, no, ma'am.
Does that answer everything you needed?
It, it helped, it helps out tremendously, and the next part, and Madam Chair, if you'll permit me, the next part is, is once they've been visited by the damage assessment team, are they clear to start clean, cleanup in their homes? Or anything like that, or do they need to continue to wait? What's the next steps going from this point forward after a FEMA damage assessment team has come by?
Go forward.
Excuse me.
Tag team.
Too many skittles, um, sorry about that. So yes, the residents are permitted to go ahead and start to clean up their properties. Uh, first, documentation, photos, photos, photos. If it's inside your house, outside your house, low light, bright light, if you use a flashlight, you have to document it. Because when we have our, our, our FEMA center that opens up here in the county, and the residents meet with FEMA, they're gonna have to show that documentation, because you have to remember, never step foot in this county. So you have to be able to document and show.
Everything.
Serial numbers, part numbers.
Anything you can document, document. And then if you, if you start cleaning stuff out of your house, and you're, make sure, and we're pushing, we'll, we're pushing out those guidelines about where to put your debris, uh, you got a lot of the household stuff, how to separate that out. We'll be pushing that out in conjunction with Shouse, because they know how that, that needs to go out. Uh, so just watch the, the social medias as much as you can, we'll also put it out in the press releases. Whether it, I'll be rolling out tomorrow, come on Friday, but you'll have another PIO rolling in, and your city PIO, Ivan Sander is, is working in the, the county, and we'll be pushing out everything that's like I did.
Cause I know that inland valley, there was debris pickup already, and people are also raiding the debris piles and different things like that for stuff. So I don't know, I don't know if those were official, unofficial, but, uh, I stopped, told them, it was like, make sure you're taking pictures of all this stuff, anything that you're taking out, take, take as many pictures as possible. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be necessary, and, I mean, that goes for everywhere. Um, I think that's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Billy, I need the mayor and the lady that bear place live named Red Cross to meet tonight.
Call the Red Cross tonight.
The lady I talked to on the phone, she handed the phone to, I want them to meet tonight.
I'll see, I'll see if she can.
She bear place live. I'm coming down to meet with her, between you two.
Is she still at the EOC?
I don't even know who she was, I talked to her, you said she was the liaison for Red Cross.
Yeah.
She needs to meet tonight.
You're ringing her.
Tonight, she needs to be at the EOC.
It's a good time for her.
You're gonna have to fix it, put it on social media that it's here, so we don't lose our food and our people.
Okay, uh, I just want to allow the public that the first meeting of the, uh, little, uh, oversight committee that we put together tonight is tomorrow at four-thirty. Um, here at Fort House in which room?
The mayor's conference room.
Mayor's conference room tomorrow, uh, October the third, four-thirty, is the first meeting of the Oversight Committee of the Financial Disaster Funds.
Financial management is five, yeah.
Yeah, financial management follows at five. Yes, switch around.
I was just gonna ask the mayor if she knew when the, the hospital would be back.
They're, they're starting, they're resuming services.
Surgery starts tomorrow.
And they're, everything's getting back online for the hospital, we had put, which I know Angie, you've been disconnected too, but we had put a press release out, I think, about Seymour Schultz Hospital, it's been up online, I think Ivan did. Facebook, I'm sorry, Facebook post, I'm sorry, press release is all going on, yes, the hospital is on its...
Okay, we, we count order again, please.
Surgery starts.
Okay, thank you, um... I want to turn the floor over to Sheriff Fraley and this may be the last comments of the night, so when he finishes speaking, unless you've got something, you may feel free to make a motion to return. Sheriff Fraley.
I hope you don't make a motion to adjourn for the podium. Guys, listen. We have had a, I don't, I can't wrap my head around it right now, what, walk one thing right now, but winds are small right now. Wind to take away from tonight as we speak is we still have no fatalities in Carter County. Now, as that being said, we haven't begun to start this fight yet, but I'll say this, the strongest soldiers are given the toughest battles. Everybody in this room is fighting a battle right now and y'all are strong soldiers and thank you for, for everything. I can't say it enough, but I want to tell you what Carter County Strong means to me right now and I, I hope it's, it's a Friday, the peak of the storm, lady lost everything she had and I watched it, I watched that waterhead and she just got out. She had her dog under one arm, she had her Bible under the other. She's walking towards Cloudon High School and I stop and I, I'm overwhelmed. Lady's lost everything she has worked for in her life and I said, "Can I help you?" And she smiled and she's walking up by you and she said, "Honey, I know you've got stuff to do." I thought, "Yeah, but right now you've lost everything, what can I do to help you?" I said, "Where are you headed?" She said, "I'm going up to the Cloudon High School, they told me it's a shelter up there." And I said, "Yeah, you need a ride?" And she said, "I can see it from here, you'll do what you need to do." I said, "I'm gonna ask one more time before I go." And she said, "Honey, please go." She said, "I've got my dog, I've got my Bible and I've got Jesus." And so, everything after that, I know we've been out of power and I had cell phone service, I've got three phones over there and it depends on what I'm saying, which one will work, it doesn't work much. But guys, please, be strong for the people of Carter County. We're gonna get through this. Be strong. And that lady right there, she was my angel that day and I've needed, I've needed a win every day, but on that note, my guys, they're tired, we're leading up a little bit, we're gonna lose on the ground till this thing's up. And again, that, that number right now, it holds at zero. We do, we think this might enough.
That is a beautiful story and if for some reason the viewership could not hear that, reach out to Mike Fraley when this is called down a little, two weeks or months and let him tell you that story personally because you need to hear it. Last call for any commissioner comments. I again want to thank the leadership, the commissioners, all of our employees and the beautiful volunteers throughout our community and surrounding regions and beyond. Thank you everyone for what you're doing, you're all playing a part in, in a major recovery effort and I thank you for that. Anybody else have anything? Okay, if it's okay with you, as we, if you are willing to adjourn this meeting, on the count of three, can we say Carter County Strong?
Can you count to three?
Carter County Strong. Good night.